Okay, thank you.
Perfect, and we will call the meeting back to order at four oh seven P M. And that brings us to delegation four point two, the council remuneration committee.
Hello.
Hello. Mayor, council. It's my honor to be the presenter on behalf of the committees tonight of our recommended changes for your policy eleven oh three. For council remuneration for the next four years. First of all, I'd like to start by thanking the committee members for all the hard work they did. We had a good member appointed, but unfortunately administration couldn't get a hold of them. But we had a committee that was built well versed in a lot of the area. And I was elected as chairperson, then we had Glenn Taylor, Bruce Pratt, and Charles Gobio sitting on the committee. I wanted to say that I won't get heavily into the parts that are only a suggestive change in regards to grammar. But I'll highlight the four points that are very important or unique of the document. I want to thank Alicia and her staff. We had three meetings of the committee. And every time we had questions, the staff was very diligent at giving us the answers for the next meeting and providing the data that we needed for our research. So I want to thank Alicia and the staff. We had three meetings in September and two in October. And all communication through the members and Alicia was done by email. The first point that I'd like to address is two point three. We felt as a committee that it was not feasible to be comparing your data with places that were only fifty or sixty percent of your population and had nowhere near the assessment base of technology. So we've recommended a change in that, that the comparators be for municipalities with the eight to ten thousand or twelve thousand population range with an average assessment base ranging between eighty and a hundred percent, a hundred and twenty percent like municipal assessment base. So we, that means that we don't have named municipalities in there, because we have the administration to pull that out from municipal compares to be able to solve the communities to compare. We still in two point four have a wording change that we still would have council. Council remuneration should still be in alignment with the market rate of sixty percentile compared to municipalities. Three point two two is just a wording change. Nothing of significance there. In four point six, we've changed the way in which councillors can attend the F C M. As long as it's within the annual preferred budget, approved budget for professional development. Then councils can collectively decide how many things they'll, instead of just one or two or whatever for a year. And it also depends on location, where expenses might be cheaper if it's held in Western Canada and the costs are a lot less than going down east, say. Four point seven is just a wording change. Four point seven one. The committee felt that it's an accounting manner to have to calculate how much each individual councillor has left, whether they're three thousand dollars for professional development or considered into reserves to be brought back in the next year. We thought if the council approved a twelve thousand budget, twelve thousand dollar budget for each member of council over the term of the four years on council, it would be the chair for administration to keep that. And that also gives flexibility in that if somebody isn't using their budget, somebody else can contribute. As long as you're not able to twelve thousand dollars in four years. So we've removed the part C and reversed to the six thousand dollars. The next part that we're at is the schedule A. The committee did not feel that we would recommend to council that we would raise the fee only once every four years. Because when we did research on what C P I was over the last four years, previous four years, it was thirteen point three percent and we did not think the public would accept a one-time raise of fifteen point three percent for the next four years. What we are recommending is that the three point three percent over a four-year term would amount to the same thing retroactively, but then that would affect your budget annually instead of having that told once for the four-year term. So we've recommended that two point three percent per year for twenty twenty five, twenty seven, twenty seven, twenty eight, and twenty nine till the next election. We did not raise the meeting fees the same amount. We've given a minimal increase in meeting fees of zero to two hours, two to four, four plus hours. This one was hard because as you probably were, there are so many diverse ways in which municipalities remunerate their councils. There's almost as many different types of remuneration as there are in the number of municipalities. And we're not all the same. So, but we did, in looking at the total for the council remuneration program last year, because there was a by-election, we had to add a little extra for the mayor and councillors' absence for those three months. So it was still comparatively in the higher range in total compared to other municipalities. And they were more than those communities of five, six thousand, of course. That's why we're saying that it should be compared to eight to twelve thousand. The next one is just some wording change, some grammar. That Alicia provided. In the act of living, we felt that councillors should be, members of council should be entitled to that benefit at a fifty percent of the amount available for regular full-time staff. One that Charles Gobio was very fluent in was the one in regards to the technology allowance. He had a lot of expertise in regards to how much technology costs these days. And so we recommended that that fifteen hundred dollar allowance be increased to three thousand dollars and that it would be prorated in if an elected official leaves before the full term or comes in through a by-election. We did have consensus that individuals seeking public office should be remunerated fairly. And we realized that a lot of different employers, we didn't want to be able to have employers restrict people from running for elected office. Some employers may deduct or make employees take vacation time to serve on council. Other employers don't worry about it, sort of. We thought that in offering fair compensation to all, there's the fairness, fairness. In regards to the first meeting and the time frame, we thought that it was a little bit tight with the appointment being made in August and trying to get the recommendations by October thirty first, which we didn't quite meet. So we agreed that we shouldn't change that time frame to February twenty eighth before you're upping what the budget costs. Well, that we still a lot of time in the vault, we, for administration especially, and maybe the most particular get at what the committee can make the recommendations. And again, on procedures of the committee, it was agreed that we would also recommend that February twenty eighth years for twenty eighth in the year of the general election. And that's the presentation. Any questions?
Thanks, Mike. I do have a councillor Haas. Councillor Haas?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mike, and to the rest of the committee, Glenn Ruth and Charles for doing this. It's not an easy committee, but it sounds like you've done a great deal of your homework in comparison and everything. Really no questions. Well, one, but it's more to administration, but the idea of the professional development over four years, I think, is unique and different. Because it does then give some latitude that way to a councillor having that minimum of like four years. I mean, granted, you might use it up in a year, but then you're done for your term. So I think that's a unique way of looking at it. I also appreciate the active living part of it. In fact, Alberta Muni's, there was a lot of conversation on the health and safety of councillors nowadays and the impact, and I think this is a great way of trying to accommodate that somewhat. I'm just curious, administration, what does a retired employee at a hundred percent get for active living with the recognition being fifty?
I would say the current rate is six hundred dollars.
Exactly, okay. So, I mean, it's not a lot, but it's something towards active living and just taking care of ourselves. So that's, I really appreciate it as well. So, yeah, that's all I have to say really at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Haas, council, and the, oh, councillor Chambers.
I thank you through the chair. I'd just like to say that I really appreciated reading and reviewing this. Thought there was a lot of good, intelligent clarity that came from a lot of these things, maybe modernizing some of the areas. I really liked the change to municipalities in the eight thousand to twelve thousand population range of the average assessment base. Because I think that does put us in a, in a more realistic grouping. I like that. And I also like a bit of that phasing of the C P I versus the whole thing. And very similar to councillor Haas. I do believe that every councillor that's going to show up is going to have vastly different needs from a professional development standpoint. That's the whole intent of council. You're not all going up with the same skill set. And what some councillors may get a lot out of, in a, in a, a conference or something else might be vastly different from others. So the ability to have that flexibility to understand this is your cap, but you can spend it where you feel, or direct, you know, direct that where you feel appropriate, I think, is wise. Yeah, so I think that this was really good work. It seemed clear and logical to me. Yeah, I was happy to read through it. It made a lot of sense. So thank you for all the hard work.
Councillor Taylor.
I've heard that from other people, that one person, a couple, that were like overpaying in comparison to our comparators. How do we set our comparator?
You're a little more than the sixty percent, but not, not, not not the highest group that way.
I see, right.
There's, there's some municipalities that would probably be better to compare with by the population. But not necessarily are they resource towns like Hinton or like Mill and put on the gas and some are same population, but they're agriculturally based. And it's hard when if they are the same population, they don't have the type of measures. I note that Hinton is lowest on the list as far as its residential and non-residential, lowest. That's great.
Mr. Fola?
You may. And then I have myself.
Comparator in relation to the mayor.
For me?
How are we as a comparator to the surrounding towns in relation to the salary of the mayor? Do they see, do they pay the mayor relatively the same?
Or less?
Or do we pay higher? That's the one I agree the most on, I'm sorry.
The seven other municipalities comparable, the mayor is third, or there's two others that are even higher, even though they're less populated.
Does that clarify councillor Taylor?
Sure.
With myself up, then councillor Haas. Mike, just out of curiosity, when we're looking at the recommended fee schedule for mayor and council, and you're talking about the sixtieth percentile, does the active living allowance, is it calculated into the total compensation package or is that over and above?
No, that's a bend.
Okay. Okay. And that's just, if I'm going to allow myself a clarification with administration. Administration, the current, the current policy does not allow for active living allowance, correct? That's correct. Okay, thank you. Councillor Haas?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, and I wanted to thank again, you know, we've got a lot of criticism over the years with the F C M. Because in the current policy, each councillor is allowed to go with one F C M in their term. But there was always that issue where if you didn't go, then all of a sudden there's four or five people going in one year, you know. So I appreciate the thought around the twelve thousand also, including the F C Ms to go to. Because then it's coming from that particular councillor's budget when it comes to professional development. And he can choose not to go to the F C M, do other things. But I think that really answers to some of that criticism about, you know, because, I mean, the odds of more than one going of the mayor is pretty high with only four, seven people and four former mayors with F C Ms. So I appreciate the committee's consideration around that as well. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, then councillor Race.
I think you threw the chair to our presenter. Can you elaborate a little bit on the thoughts of the committee around the technology allowance? And I'm just curious, when I, when I look at it, having come in at a by-election, I realize that if we, depending on how it was prorated, you could be leaving a brand-new councillor with a very small amount for technology allowance and no choice but to buy into the technology. I'm curious, because you mentioned that it was a very thorough discussion on the technology allowance, can you extrapolate a little bit, give us some of the details of the thought process?
Mr. Gobio was the expert on this topic. He said you won't get much if you're technologically inclined, which I'm not. I like to write on things. He said you don't get much for fifteen hundred dollars. You don't get much processing capacity and stuff. So that's when, in his research, told us that three thousand was probably a better number. But if I'm a councillor and I buy for three thousand dollars at the start of my term, but then I quit two years later, I'm going to have to pay the dumbback fifteen hundred dollars.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Race?
Thank you, sir. So, Mike, back in twenty seventeen, we went to a full-time mayor position. Your comparators, are these full-time or part-time positions?
Just part-time.
I'm sorry?
Part-time.
They're all part-time?
We, we did understand Jasper is looking at potentially going to a full-time paid mayor at, I think I mentioned this number, at roughly a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars a year.
So, I was like, seven years I'm holding full-time salary of mayor?
Well, I don't know if you qualify, or is the mayor a full-time here? The, in looking at the comparators, the mayor is making less than some that I do not believe are full-time mayors. But they, they are being, because of the duties of mayor being that much different in representing the municipality and functions of all states, this time is being compensated for.
Sorry, you're saying that's
Councillor Race, I have another councillor in queue. I'll put you back in the line. Councillor Haas?
Well, actually, it's of the same lines, because I think that's an important thing to recognize is that if you're of that list and three of, two of their, three of them are higher than our mayor, but are at part-time, our mayor is considered a full-time position, which was a lot of conversation going back and forth during the last term. You know, because a lot of mayors that I speak to that are part-time do not do the work of a part-time person. They're, they're always, you know, it could be considered full-time. So I think that's a really important aspect of this to recognize too, if we're looking at a mayor, his compensation makes a lot of difference between a part-time and full-time. And I know for a fact, I mean, our mayor is here every day, work hours here, and also whereas maybe previous mayors may have done it a little bit differently. But, you know, I think there's a lot of advantage to that and knowing that, that there is higher pay amongst part-time, that's, I think, a good emphasis.
After forty-seven years of municipal administration, I know some mayors of a population of two thousand did the same amount of work as one of ten thousand, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And the other one? Councillor Race?
Full-time percent.
I said councillor Haas, something like three.
Council, any further questions? Seeing not, oh, councillor Taylor.
What I think about fair payment is not necessarily comparing us to comparators, but thinking about the amount of work that say the average person who's in a lot of good state are a reasonable rate of pay. So do you think about that when you thought about pay? So as a councillor, how much does the average councillor put in per week? And what's a reasonable set of pay for that? And so the amount that he's getting reimbursed will represent something that makes sense about amount.
Both Mr. Taylor and I, having the experience in municipal government, both know how much time it takes to prepare for that. And when we divided that down into the meeting fees especially, a lot of municipalities I've never seen a meeting fees and a meeting fees for council meetings and committee of the whole meetings. That's in the base salary, and then they get paid for boards, commissions, and committees that are outside of council. Like I said, there's a lot of diversity when it comes to how you remunerate council. But we did think that, that these rates per hour would generally compensate somebody fairly if their employer was too docked and, which having to take time off that is upon their duties as a councillor. Other employers don't, don't worry about it. They're likely to let you hold out at work on council, but some employers are, are a little more strict than that. And we felt that those meetings facing that were rare compensation.
Thank you.
Council, anything else? Well, we, we really do, Mike, appreciate the councillor, pardon me, the committee's time and deliberations in providing the recommendations to council. I'm certain, of course, this is something that council will see before, when it makes the decision. And for anybody who might be watching, council doesn't, this doesn't impact any changes. This council, these are changes that will impact the incoming council and how they're remunerated, so. Councillor Haas?
On that, no, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just curious, when does council of today, let him see this come back to us, administration?
It's meeting, according, I'm sorry, through the chair. According to the policy, it has to be at council meeting immediately following this presentation from the committee. So you see it this week.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ben, thank you, Ben councillor Haas. And that's, and with that, Mike, thank you so much for coming out this evening to be with us.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay.
Put my golf bat on. See you guys later.
You guys, see you later, Mike. And then with that, we will move on to reports from administration. Again, we've amended the agenda for five point three. The budget, library and civic agencies presentation will be first. And administration had indicated that we will start with library. Again, just have a respect for our presenters' time this evening. So, administration, did you want to lead off?
Thank you, Chair. If I could, and the intent of today was not to go through a whole margin presentation, but they have provided the ask of this year, they have included the budget to our consideration. So, you know, our intent of today is just to continue to help shape the budget to get closer to the finalized documents. So library is one that we do need to talk about, so we wanted to do that today. We included that under this umbrella of civic agency, this one is not considered civic agency. We haven't for, I believe, two to three years we haven't. So this is a little bit separate, so, you know, we're not available. Provided on the budget alongside the twenty five. So if there are any questions, committee, I'd like to direct them to Alicia or the representatives we have here for the live.
Please.
Thank you. Thank you very much. My name is Sue Armstrong, and I'm the chair of the Hinton Library Board. And your committee is Shannon, Shannon Lott. She is the manager of the library. And we really here tonight are just here to answer any questions you might have on our budget. And there's been a bit of confusion as to when budget documents were due and so on. And, and so our understanding is, is this is the first time that council has seen our budget breakdown for twenty twenty five. And so we just want to make sure that if there's any questions that council might have, or I guess committee might have this evening on our budget, we're here to kind of fill in any gaps you can have.
Great. Council, any questions, any discussion? Councillor Taylor?
The civic agency support document that precedes your detailed sheet, at the bottom of the sheet, it says it looks like your ask is five hundred eighty-seven thousand three hundred ninety-one on that sheet, but it also shows reserves of four hundred and thirty-four thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight. Why is that?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to councillor Taylor, I think we have to turn to administration to answer to that document. We did not prepare the civic agency support document that says the, the library reserves and so on. So maybe administration can help fill in that blank board.
Before we do, may I ask you what your understanding and what your reserves is?
We're not a hundred percent sure at this point, because we have been doing the library upgrades. And the last set of bills for October just went in. And so we haven't got a final number on that from administration, but we're thinking not very much is left. Our contract did come in at slightly under a hundred thousand, so we don't have a lot of reserves left.
Administration?
If you're okay with me responding directly through the chair. So in twenty twenty four, we have indicated that the library had four hundred and thirty-four thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars in reserves. That number was derived from the balance showing at the end of twenty twenty-three in the audit as financial statements of four hundred and eighteen thousand plus the sixteen thousand that generally is always put into the operating budget to look to be replenishing their reserves every year. So that balance is as close as we have right now today with the un reconcile data that we have with everything being just happening at the end of this last quarter. So we're working on the reconciliation for all of the So we're working on the reconciliation for all of the, uh, twenty twenty four monies and we'll be able to do that forward later on.
Go ahead.
Well, the dilemma I'm left with is that, uh, you have a hundred thousand dollar, uh, project and you have zero left. And, um, and our consolidated financial statements said you have four hundred and thirty four thousand. You remember, do you see my confusion?
Through you, Mr. Chair, if I may, um, we're substantially confused as well. And so if I may. As part of the budget process for twenty twenty four, uh, my understanding was that, um, the library board. Um, reduced its ass last year by a hundred and four thousand initially out of the reserves. And then through the budget deliberations, council then, um, reduced our budget a third of. Uh, an additional hundred and seventy, give or take, because he's helping with the numbers. And so. Um, my understanding is then this number of four thirty four, um, does not represent then, um. Where the reserves are actually sitting at. Uh, so if anyone else can provide any more clarity, I would appreciate that.
I'm, uh, I I do recognize just so that we understand, Counselor Chambers and Hoss are in queue, but administration and C A O, please.
Just to provide a little bit of context. So last year, uh, through the reserve contributions, her through the. We did not fund them at all and all of the, uh, operating was funded through reserves as well to the two hundred, I believe, four thirty four. Uh, plus the. Whatever projects that the library had undertaken. So we didn't actually provide, uh, any municipal funding last year was. Uh. It was funded through the library service.
Thank you, C A O. Uh, Counselor Chambers and Counselor Hoss.
Thank you through the chair. Just one quick question. Sorry if I missed it somewhere, but. Under the municipal grants, it just the the comment is receiving last money from Yellow County and previously anticipated. What does that normally look like? Is that based on usership? Is that based on, you know, kind of where where does that come from? It's not a substantial difference, I guess, in the long run, but I I just. Would like more understanding about what that partnership looks like and that means.
Yeah. So through the chair, through the rest of the committee, that, uh, decrease was basically. It was through a misunderstanding with Yellow County when they had somebody in that session who misunderstood the formula that we use in our memorandum agreement with them. And so. There was a time period where I understood that we were to receive more than, uh, was actually. Going to do a lot to us and stuff.
Sue.
Um, if I may, through you, Mr. Chair, to respond back to Counselor Taylor, um, not all of our library operations were funded. Through reserves last year. Um, of course, we always have the provincial allotment and allotment from Yellowhead County, but the town did also. Have a contribution to, uh, our funding last year as well. And I believe it was in the neighborhood of two hundred and eighty one thousand.
Perfect. Thank you for that clarification. Uh, Counselor Hoss.
Yeah. I think this is an example of in the past, the numbers don't catch up to what's actually is happening because, um. That is our understanding as well is is about half of our budget, operational budget last year. Was through our reserves that got it down to that hundred. Or ninety thousand or so, which then was divorced, uh, um. It was a worse decision. So then we wanted to do upgrades in that area to take those funds and do that. So. I think this is another example of some of the confusions in the past that happened with the reserves in the library. And just the fact that the numbers aren't catching up with one another. Um, because, uh. I agree with the with with the chair there that, um. Library chair that some of the operating funds were funded to us, but the others were then. Through our reserves, um, and that was the distribution of the board. We didn't have to take it from the service. We kind of left them the way they were, but then it would have been half of the amount of money to run, run the library. So. Um, so I I'm not sure where the accounting numbers lie, but it it is. From all the board's point of view and discussions that there should be next to nothing, should be this our sixteen thousand dollar ask. Uh, that we're starting from scratch, uh, and and building our capital right back. So. Um, I don't know if administration can speak more to that, but that's that's my understanding from the from the beginning of this. So.
Any men, was there any further comment on Counselor Hoss's statement before I move on?
You don't care without going back and looking at the records for last year, I, uh. That Shannon and I have been in contact and we are both of the agreement that, uh. Once all the bills are ready, we need to reconcile the library with the town first and foremost.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Taylor.
Well, I understand what happened is exactly the same as your understanding. What happened is just that the numbers and the town manager's explanation don't match up to that. So, um. That town manager explanation caused even more confusion. Is it possible that we actually were going to pay for part of this with the, uh. Reserves, but then inadvertently gave you the full allotment and that's why we have this much money sitting here. So so for us to guess on on what's causing this, we really need somebody to go back and do some, uh. Calculations and come up with a logical explanation, I think, before we can make any sort of decisions on this budget.
Counsel or? Admin, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Through the chair to administration, uh, I understand this is pre-budget opportunity for us to talk to the the folks in the library board. What does administration need from us today, uh, on this?
Under the chair, uh, we'll be seeking consensus to keep, uh, asking the library in the twenty twenty five budget.
Chair, my man, I'd like to make that consensus.
Okay, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We'll just wait for administration to counter that since the electronic voting is working today. Um, while that's happening, uh, Mr. Mayor, would you care to speak to that?
I. I'm looking to move this process forward along and see the full report with, uh, all of the numbers and and reserve numbers from administration. And, uh, we see this at a standard here with some source. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Uh, counsel, any discussion on the, uh, request on the floor? Counselor Taylor.
I mean, I'm a big fan of the library and all that, and I do use it occasionally, but, uh. I'm having difficulty, um, looking for this in light of the discrepancy that I see. So that's sorted out for me. It's just my take on it.
Counsel, uh, any other questions or discussion? I'll, uh, I I'll put myself in queue. Really, I, my question for administration is, um. Is there a discrepancy between the figures that are being reported? I guess that's the thing I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around. When what does administration see right now, uh, based on some of the comments from one of my colleagues? It, I'm sorry, and let me help guide the the response because I don't want to, uh, be too nebulous. What I think I heard from administration is that, uh, the full, uh, reconciliation between. Uh, the library board and the town still needs to be wrapped up. Um, does that need to happen? Or or does administration feel like that, uh, finalization maybe could provide counsel with some additional information that would be called for the future?
Uh, through to all of committees, though I have very quickly opened up and, uh, Shannon has not seen this document. So I'm here as she goes through. I am showing, uh, the budget twenty twenty four. Transfers from reserves to fund the library with the four hundred and thirty four thousand seven hundred and seventy. Um, I can certainly email this to, um, the library manager and her and I can talk about it first thing. So. Where I would have some hesitation and in. Knowing that it took a full four hundred and thirty four thousand seven hundred and seventy eight to fund the library is where. A, not completely done here and B, I haven't looked at the total or the capital growth down. So that total amount of transfers from reserves. Will. Uh, adjust by the end of the year once we know they're full operating. And but we can get pretty close as the fact that we're into November and we can make. Some assumptions for the final six to seven weeks of the year, which I'm very happy to do with the library manager and very. Speedy format. Where my hesitation of not having any discussions on twenty twenty five would be is that. If we don't look at their document that they brought forward for us this evening, then we're carrying potentially questions forward to a future meeting, which could. Um, stall, if you will, the twenty twenty five budget process. So I. I I hope that if there were questions on the twenty twenty five budget for the library, that we can still ask those today, even though we don't have a full accounting for twenty.
Thank you, admin. Uh, Counselor Hoss and Counselor Chambers. Counselor Hoss.
Sorry. So you know, had something.
Oh, I just apologize, C A O.
Sorry, and just to add on to that, I I. I believe looking at it, but we can reconcile the, uh, the exact totals for the end of the year, but. In the at very high level, they all wrap very closely what our decision of last year because it did require. Funding through the library reserves to fund their operations and, uh, so between that and the the capital items. Looking at those capital projects, I think that number is very close to accurate. Um. By the way, I'm reading the document. So I think we're very close, uh, but I also just mentioned to counsel that. The reserves for the library are not really ours, right? We don't control the life. We don't control their reserves. Our decision of council is, do we want to fund the operations, um. Of of the library moving forward. Last year, we we did not. Request that the library offset your operation through the the reserves. We we cut the funding for the library and it was up to the library to decide how they wanted to forward under that. With that decision, so. But I believe that looking at these numbers, I think are very close between the capital items and the the amount that would have been offset through the operations for the reserve transfer.
Thank you, C A O. Counselor Hoss and Counselor Chambers.
Yeah, I appreciate the CEO's comments because. It it is confusing because I believe inner twenty twenty three. Deliberation, that was exactly the number that we were looking at is the one you were talking about. And so. It that was the one that was then compensated with. And so. We as a board, I know, have diligently looked at and gone over the numbers, uh, to make sure that. You know, we we got those reserves down to a minimal amount, which is close to the zero. Uh, so I am confident, my understanding. That year was because we don't know what. We don't know what the year end operations will look like, then it would be compensated out of those reserves for twenty twenty four at a later date. Once those year ends. So I I I concur, I I personally can guarantee that, you know. As a board, we've we've looked at that. So once the numbers are all, um. Our guess when they updated, um, I think that, you know, then it'll be, it'll show what is really in there because that's not what's in there and so. So I'd say, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hoss. Counselor Chambers.
I think you through the chair. So I mean, the way I look at this is our job today is to look at the budget and understand the budget. Um, my understanding, Counselor Taylor's concerns is. You feel that what's missing in this budget is the reconciliation of the reserve specifically, and that's the only thing we feel that's missing. So. Reconciliation of the reserve amounts and what.
Yes, one.
Please. Yeah.
Sure. Um, no, I know reserves aren't our business, but this is the problem we had last year because of reserves were so high for. Reasons that I don't want to re-explain. Nobody is telling me for sure what this four hundred and thirty four thousand dollars is. So I'd like to understand that number or else we have a repeat of the situation from a year ago.
Please.
Uh, through the chair, um, I I I understand that, but I do think that our job is to look at the budget and as we bring this forward. We have the reconciliations and the funding parts of this and most percentages and most things will come in by the future meeting. So I I feel like it's uncomfortable looking at this and moving ahead as looking at those budget items. With, um, understanding that there's obviously some pending invoices and things like that that need to come through and and I think it's. We're going to move this forward.
Um, I have one, uh, clarification myself that I'd like to request. Really, it's just a bottom line clarification, you know, in case we have any community members who are watching. Um, so at the bottom of the, uh, budget sheet, and it talks about twenty four. As its own column and twenty five as its own column. So in two thousand and twenty four. Uh, the total funding request for the town of Hinton was four hundred and thirty one thousand dollars at that time. And then this year, the total funding request from the town of Hinton is five hundred eighty seven thousand dollars. So my my follow up to that is if I'm, uh, Joe and Jane citizen out in the public. Uh, and they come up to council and they say, hey, council, you've got this library request for, you know, five hundred eighty seven thousand dollars this year. Last year, the request, regardless of what the funding was, was four hundred and thirty one. Why? Why such a substantial change? Uh, from the board's perspective, from the library board's perspective, what would the go to answer be then?
There's actually five things in play, um, with this. The first is, is the library board initially had decided to, um. Basically reduce its ass by a hundred and four thousand. Uh, so we were going to take that out of our reserve. So that was. A decision that the library board made. So that's part of the difference. And then there's a few other things at play this year. Um, staffing is always our biggest expense. So we have cost of living. We have step increases for our staff. As, um, we've already been made aware, Yellowhead County is giving us a little bit less. Uh, this year, we're proposing to give us a little bit less. So then therefore the town's allotment would be a little bit higher. And we've also removed, um, any income, um, from grants for the summer reading coordinator, the five thousand dollars there. Um, because we have haven't been getting that grant. So it's better off not including it as a potential, uh, income, but just as an expense. So those are basically the five things that play there for the difference between those.
And before I move on, just, uh, one final piece. Are there any major changes to the level of service that the library is offering in this upcoming, uh, year?
We are proposing no changes to our level of service.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Uh, counsel, uh, we do have, uh, requests for consensus from the mayor on the floor. Any further discussions or deliberations? Counselor Taylor.
Just one more, if you don't mind. The five hundred eighty seven thousand, how much of that is, uh, capital that it go to capitals?
Uh. That's, uh, that's all just for, that's no, no capital. It's necessary. It's operation.
Oh, I see.
Yes, that's just purely funding, uh, normal operations of the library here.
You're not, you're not asking for capital?
No.
Okay.
Sixteen thousand.
Listen, oh, yes, we are asking for sixteen thousand, um, to start rebuilding our reserves so that then we can do.
Um, items, we have a a capital replacement plan, uh, in place. So in twenty twenty five, we're not looking at needing. Any funds for anything for capital replacement, uh, but we are asking for sixteen thousand. Um, in order to start, uh, rebuilding the reserve so that we do have money when things like our computers need to be redone in the years and so on.
Thank you.
Counselor Hoss.
That was, yeah, just my comment.
Perfect. Uh, counsel, any further discussion on this? Uh, just a clarification against, uh, request of administration and then for any individuals who are following the budgetary process, um. Just because this is included through committee of the whole in the the budget process. This does not reflect any final decisions of council. This is just part of the budget process. Uh, moving this forward to include it with that that budget package, correct?
That's correct. The, um. If a consensus today is successful, that will move forward into the budget process for council to debate and make decisions on it properly.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Counsel, any further discussions on this? Seeing none, then we'll call to question that committee seek consensus to include the library requisition in the draft twenty twenty five budget. Counsel, if you can vote electronically now.
My electronic doesn't work.
Uh, in favor or against counsel?
Against.
Against.
Thank you.
That is carried six to one with Counselor Taylor against. Counsel. Uh, any further discussion on this? Ladies, thanks so much. Ladies, thanks so much for coming out. We appreciate your time uh discussing the budget as we have a sort of that first glance through the budget process and having a look at it.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate you taking us early.
You betcha. Uh, Councilor Hoss?
Yeah, just for council's sake, you you noticed that our chair is here. This was something that our board requested. Uh, you know, because I know our manager is very, you know, uh, well privileged in the budget, however, she is not responsible for that. It is our board. So that's why we wanted to have our board chair present as well to share that that conversation. I think it just makes it uh, you know, a better better line of communication. So because ultimately at the end, they were responsible for that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Administration, uh, how would you like to proceed or is there another presentation discussion that you'd like to have around civic agencies?
Uh, yeah, if I could, just to to go through, because it's a big long list of all of our civic agency that's this year, I can just maybe touch on some of the changes um first, and then I'll allow council to maybe uh, once I touch on all the changes, council can have a discussion about taking one agency that we want to talk a little further, but uh, from twenty four to twenty five, uh, the Art Society is requesting a thousand dollars less. Uh, the Hinton Chamber of Commerce and the Hinton Destination Marketing Organization. Uh, in twenty four, we also paid the twenty three, so that's it's not additional funding, is my understanding. Um, so the twenty three will remain. There is some offsetting revenue, but that twenty three thousand for the Tourism Information Center. But that thirty four thousand was what we historically spent on the Tourism Information Center. That is being requested to move to a different organization as the the DMO. Uh, moving into the Hinton Food Bank, this one is a a new request for twenty twenty five for fifteen thousand. The Hinton Healthcare Foundation, this was an agreement that we made earlier this year, but this five hundred thousand uh is new. Twenty twenty four actually did have a, and it's an expense of about two hundred and fifty thousand as well. Uh, in in the uh, the working budget document, we had that split, uh, two hundred and fifty coming from reserves, two hundred and fifty coming out of general revenue. The Hinton Historical Society has requested sixty five thousand, which is an increase of about ten thousand. And the uh Yellowhead County Regional Airport, uh, we had simply removed that to a more appropriate location of the budget. It was never really a civic agency. Nobody really knew why that snuck in there, so we moved that to contracted services where it belongs. Uh, so that brings a total of eight hundred, uh, eight hundred and fifty six thousand eight hundred county, or sorry, uh, council has discussed setting a cap, but you know, we think that if council is going to set a amount that would help the community, it would be done so here. Um, but with all the information of all of the requests in front of you, if 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 committee would like to set that cap at some point, we can certainly uh, any member can put forward a consensus for who introduced that and uh what we're about to.
Thank you very much. Councilor Hoss?
Thank you. So uh, just a clarifying question. The 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 intent of this evening is to somewhat go through this like we did on the workshop budget, looking for consensus on this this list. Is that the the intent of administration?
That's correct.
Okay. So I'm gonna start off with, uh, I'd like to seek consensus to remove the Foothills Recreation Management Association from the civic agency support. And I'll just like, maybe you can look to get that and then we'll speak.
If you want, council, you must be too.
Um, so the reason I am doing this is we've had the Foothills Recreation Management Association come uh forward, and my understanding of this is this is for wood uh in our campgrounds, surrounding campgrounds uh that are in not in the boundaries of Hinton. Uh, and the idea was to, you know, tourists that they may come here, but uh in my I've looked around at other uh municipalities that are in this region as well. We're the only one that continues to fund that twenty thousand dollars. Other communities such as Essendon were off this funding many years ago. Um, and it was also stated, I believe, in the last time they came here, that if this funding didn't go through, then they would look for other sources or donations of wood. I just don't see this a reasonable uh ask of our community to fund twenty thousand dollars worth of wood for recreational sites that are not in our community. Um, I think people will come and regardless, uh, they they use, uh, not those sites necessarily also with all the different provincial where they can buy and build provincially in kind of crown lands and whatever. So I just don't think you see this as an expense that's necessary for us moving forwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hoss. I have myself in queue next, but I'm actually going to drop back to the main queue. Uh, Councilor Taylor, are you speaking to the consensus request on the floor?
Yeah, I could go to speak a little or explain my thinking, you know, if that's all right.
Absolutely, please.
If you allow me a little tolerance. Um, my thinking regarding this list is that uh there's a number of things that are absolutely critical to the health of the citizens of Hinton. And those things I've heard fully found, medical situation, food bank and the stars. Basically, everything else I'm looking at, uh, you know, they they get eighty percent with some exceptions. Art Society might be one exception. And some other exceptions. Basically, they get eighty percent of the money that they ask for. And the the idea is that everybody will get uh a little bit less, but everybody will get something. And uh, I think that's a fair way of coming up with uh something that will help us out with this ten percent potential uh budget increase. So in that case, I'll be joining you in voting against the twenty thousand, but immediately I'd be putting in after that motion to give them uh sixteen thousand, which is eighty percent of the twenty thousand. And my logic for doing that is that these folks are helping us out with our Beaver Boardwalk. And I don't want to leave them alone in the cold right now. Like to their, we we got a partnership relationship with them. I mean, it jeopardized that if we give nothing. I think sixty percent or eighty percent will help help them have uh something. That's my thinking on on this whole this. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Taylor. Uh, Councilor Hoss?
Um, can I have a clarifying this question to you? What is this organization doing for the Beaver Boardwalk?
Uh, the organization, uh, Freea. With this is this is operated under the guise of Freea. And Freea is giving us the money for the Beaver Boardwalk.
Okay, I see this two diff- these are two different things. So if I may, I want to speak to that if I could.
I think what the chair is going to do is the chair is going to seek uh clarification from administration is that I I'd just like to know if that statement is accurate.
Through the chair, I'm not aware of any specific ties between the two organizations, but a little bit because the Freea Fund is actually a stumpage royalty uh stumpage royalty fee. So um it's actually the companies or the uh the companies who are paying into the Freea Fund and then Freea Fund is uh issued through um issued through a provincial program, but it's the actual companies who are paying stumpage fees. It's the companies to do the endorsement. Uh, this organization is um the organizations that are are that are on the um Foothills Recreation Management Associations, maybe the same companies. Um, West Fraser for one, so they may be tied back to the same companies or organizations, but I don't think the two are um the two are the same.
Um, thank you very much. I'm going to go to the mayor and then Councilor Hoss. Mr. Mayor?
You can go back to Councilor Hoss. That was my question.
Okay, uh, Councilor Hoss?
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate that they may be somewhat, but I mean, being a member of the BBOC Committee, Foothills Recreation Management Association has never entered a conversation uh as partnerships or anything like that, I agree. But as far as I understand, this Foothills Recreation Management Association is the association that manages hires uh and looks after the local campgrounds in the area, different places, but that's my understanding. So I I I'm not familiar with this being connected to the Beaver Boardwalk at all. So, thank you.
Absolutely, Taylor?
I'm gonna be clear enough. I think the connection is through West Fraser. That the the that's the connection that I that I see. Freea is money that's taken on money from North Sportasers, a reforestation fund, and put in this plot, and then West Fraser, as you say. Substantially where that money goes within their operating areas. And they are uh they are supporting our Beaver Boardwalk project and they support the uh Foothills Recreation Project. So that's where I see the association. And that's that's where I see the partnership. Not a formal partnership, but it's a horrible loose partnership.
Thank you very much. Council, uh, we do have the consent request on the floor. Mr. Mayor, did you have something?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you. Through the chair to administration. I'm just looking back through some of our our previous reports and and one on the Beaver Boardwalk. Uh, there's a map that I'm looking at, and it it mentions trails that are outside of the scope of the Beaver Beaver Boardwalk Operating Committee. And it says that these are the scope uh maintained by uh the Hinton Mountain Bike Association and FRMA. Do we have trails that are in town that are maintained and managed by FRMA?
Through the chair, I'm not aware of the specific trails, but I do know that there are some trails that are managed by FRMA as well. I'm not sure which particular ones. I don't know if they're in and around the Beaver Boardwalk area. I keep that as primarily Kimba or Town Trails. Um, but we can certainly look into that. I I don't think you're embarrassed.
Thank you. I would be interested in knowing if uh FRMA is maintaining trails within our town. Absolutely, if that ever comes back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, uh, any further discussion on the consensus request on the floor? Councilor Hoss, I am just going to check with you that consensus should help request. Okay, perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You betcha. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, we will call to question that committee seek consensus to remove, sorry, um Ms. Davy Campbell, seek consensus to remove Foothills Recreation Management Association from the civic agency list. Council, we'll just wait a second because I think it's going to repop for us. Thank you. Council, we'll call to question. Please vote electronically now. So that is carried five to two with Mayor Nissen and Councilor Ostachik against. Uh, and then actually, uh, Councilor Taylor, I have myself in queue from the main queue, but I will put you in underneath. Um, my question for administration, administration, I know I asked this previously because we were talking about potential initiatives being funded from various reserves. Um, if we can go back to the safety reserve, um, again, without without pulling you to exact dollars and cents, do you have an approximation with the updates to the draft budget of where our um safety initiatives reserve is currently at?
Through the chair to all of committees, um, potentially at four hundred and sixty seven thousand. But that is also very dependent on the direction received as far as the hundred thousand dollar for fire smarting. We're going to go for grants first, so if we're able to secure the hundred thousand dollars in grant, then the forecast balance is at five sixty seven.
Very good. Uh, I would ask the next deputy uh mayor to take uh take over chairing so I can introduce a consensus request. Um, Ms. Davy Campbell, who's next up?
So, Councilor Stashik.
So I just got lucky in the last meeting when I asked you.
That was why you were.
I'm not going to pretend to be that good. No, I was just an honest man. Uh, Councilor Ostachik, would you mind uh taking taking over?
Sure.
Okay.
That's what I do.
Uh, thank you. Um, so council, I'd like to seek consensus. Um, so Andy Min, if you can help me with this, uh, I just want to make sure it's appropriately worded uh that the Hinton Healthcare Foundation requisition of five hundred thousand dollars be split to include one hundred thousand dollars funded from the safety reserve. And if I can uh speak to that, Mr. Chair? Thank you. Uh, council, I I do recognize that part of this is a bit like shuffling deck chairs on the Titanic for good the analogy. Um, but we're faced with a tough budget currently that, you know, if if we do the totaling of all the the various requests, you know, we're looking at the tune of between nine and ten percent, and that's just not feasible. Uh, I I don't think it's reasonable. Um, you know, there are things that we have within our purview to do. Um, the safe, you know, the safety initiative is essentially uh aimed at ensuring we have a safe community. There's we have a lot of latitude with how we use that reserve. For myself, uh, the current state of health is not the town of Hinton's to deal with. Um, but again, we're forced to deal with it because we want our clinic to remain operational. We want those physicians that we do have in town practicing in medicine to stick around. But a half a million dollars uh is, it's it's not cheap. Uh, so I think we have to be flexible to deal with that. Um, this is one of those things that I think we can do to deal with the problem. Funding the majority through it operations, but taking advantage of the reserves that we do have. Reserves are there to be used in times of, you know, extending many circumstances, and this is one of those times in my opinion. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilor DeGru. Many, so we have a direction request on the floor. Any questions? Council, please.
Thank you, Chair. So currently with the the working copy of the budget, two hundred and fifty is coming out of that safety reserve. So this is a, um, instead of two fifty, we're talking about reducing that to one hundred coming from reserves with four hundred coming from general operations, correct?
Yes, so.
Sorry.
Undergoing, and then he's asking for some clarification on your motion.
No, that's my mistake. Sorry, then, in the total amount of funding coming out of the safety reserve, you're absolutely right. My apologies. It would be then three fifty coming from that reserve.
Okay, so additional then.
An additional. No, that's, I, yeah, my bad. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Uh, to committee, Councilor Chambers?
Um, that was actually exactly what I was going to ask.
Councilor Hoss?
Okay, so for clarity, I mean, three hundred and fifty coming from from that safety reserve. But my understanding is we've only got a little four little four hundred change in there right now. If we took three fifty, then that previous motion that if we don't get any fire smarting grants, wouldn't have enough money in that that pot to to fund that grant.
Uh, due to all the community clarification, the forecasted balance I provided had two fifty already taken out, so there would be enough funds for the additional one hundred thousand plus having the contingency for the fire.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Um, that's all I have.
That's what I do.
Yeah, I I apologize. That's why I should have been more clear about the additional one hundred thousand. That's, again, my apologies.
Lady? Councilor Taylor, just going to go back to Councilor Taylor?
Yeah, no problem. Um, no, I support this uh five hundred thousand in my watch because it's uh for the um, ethical for the, I think, I help the community and certainly it is the news about the responsibility, but it's something I think we have to do to keep our citizens' uh uh health uh looked after. But, you know, when when we first approved this five hundred thousand, I thought the whole thing was going to be out of capital, honestly. And then to find out that half is coming out of capital and half is coming out of operations was a bit of a surprise. So I do support what you're saying. I'm just wondering if you're going far enough, because that's what I thought. I don't know what you guys thought.
Uh, so questions, Councilor DeGru?
It's almost a question of the rest of council. What did you think when we approved this? Did you think that this was coming out of capital or what? I thought it was all okay, all capital.
Thank you, Councilor Taylor. Uh, myself, and then Councilor New. Uh, at this point, I can't support this this direction request. I appreciate the the thought behind it and trying to minimize taxation, but I'm not going to support it as a matter of principle. And though I've said this the whole time, I don't think it's the town of Hinton's responsibility. And though I've said this the whole time, I don't think it's the town of Hinton's responsibility to spend taxpayer dollars to, to help cover the expenses of, of, of a medical clinic in Hinton. That is the provincial responsibility and that the province should be finding ways to be able to make sure that the medical facilities in this and other community are able to continue operating. I feel that this burden should be carried through taxation. Because if it's impacting citizens of Hinton in their pocketbook by making their taxes higher, that is incentivization for them to get after their MLA and tell their MLA to get to their pro, their provincial cohorts and figure out a way to fund medical facilities in Alberta communities appropriately. If we just take it out of reserves, it's not impacting the citizens. It's very easy for them to, to disregard it. It's coming out of reserves. It's not impacting them. I appreciate the intent, but to try and minimize the impact through taxation on the citizens. But I don't think this is the way to do it. If we want to fund something else through a safety initiative, I'd take a look at it, but I don't think that this is a thing should be funded through the safety initiative. Aside from that, I think that the safety initiative should be used to actually drive forward projects or initiatives that improve safety in our community. We talked about using it for fire smarting. I think that's a great use of safety initiative. Um. Uh, that, that, that's, I'm going to stop at that. Uh, I'm not going to support it though. Thank you. Councilor McGee?
Uh, thank you very much, Councilor Ostachik. Um, I actually, I really respect what Councilor Ostachik just said. I think that's, uh, and I don't think there's enough pressure that gets put on our provincial counterparts, especially in this portfolio. That being said, I did see that the, um, the CAO had wanted to speak on to Councilor Taylor's question. And I wonder if he and I are sort of in the same train of thought. Last year, my understanding for the twenty twenty-four budget year was that the funding came primarily from, from reserves. Is that, is that correct?
Through the chair, yes. So we, we identified when we had this conversation, we identified the funding plan. Twenty twenty-four, because it was unbudgeted, we had taken that from reserves. Uh, to the funding plan that we had spoke about is every other year had it coming fully out of operation. So five hundred this year. Uh, two fifty really gets its path away into twenty twenty-five, but it did have this coming out of operations. But I'm good, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay. Danny, you have another one? Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Uh, and through the chair to, to committee, I'm, uh, I'm of the same mind as Councilor Ostachik on this one. I think that the pressure on our provincial government is absolutely essential when it comes to our healthcare system. And if we quietly do their job for them, they are not going to solve their problems. I fully believe that. Uh, further for that. I did have a lot of questions around the reserve allocation for this, this plan anyways. So I'm not going to support this today. I may support this when we actually have a look at our reserve tables, charts and know those numbers. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Hoss?
Yeah, I, I appreciate the, the intent. I, I just, I can't support this. That's one. Because there is no, if I may, to, to administration. My understanding, the safety fund was, uh, supplied mainly by the, uh, photo radar. And currently, right now, there is no other stream going into that reserve, uh, at all. Is that my understanding?
You know, I may that it's correct. In twenty twenty-four, if generator, we did collect, I believe it was a hundred and nine thousand of outstanding fines, which is why you see a thirty thousand dollar amount in the community grant fund, because that's per policy, thirty percent of what was collected, we allocated there.
Right.
So if I may, then to continue with my train of thought is, uh, I, I feel the same way about, you know, uh, from the beginning, we're taking on a responsibility that's not ours. And we need to have that leverage and by doing this, we are, we're not putting it on the forefront, we're paying, and this is a reserve that can benefit our community in a lot of different ways, uh, right now and to, um, to to drain even more out of that account with nothing else coming much into it. I just can't support it this time. Um. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hoss, Councilor Race.
Thank you, sir. Councilor, can you explain to me, before I fully understand this, what do you mean by to, um, split the five hundred thousand?
That's what we do.
Yeah, that's, actually, that's, that's erroneous, as pointed out by the, uh, the CAO. I think so that it's accurate, it should probably reflect three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to come from reserves. And I appreciate the CAO's help on that, which is why I was looking for a little bit of assistance from it, so.
I have one more question for the, the two administration. When can we expect some, um, paper or information on how the two hundred and fifty thousand that we gave, but so far? What's it done?
Uh, through the chair, I believe that we have requested some information, but I believe it's at by December thirty-first this year. We, we gave them a lot of time on just because it was very new, but, uh, uh, we had to jump out quickly, so I believe it's December thirty-first. Um. So within.
That's all present. Thanks.
Councilor Race, Mr. Gary?
So, Councilor McGee? I'm, I'm supportive of three fifty coming from the safety reserve, but that's not what that says, correct?
No, I, sorry, Mr. Chairman, respond.
Yeah.
I know that as, which, again, I asked administration for assistance. The CAO accurately pointed out, there's already two fifty slated. My request was essentially to increase that by a hundred thousand dollars. So it would reflect three hundred and fifty total coming out of that reserve.
So committee, Councilor McGee has requested to change the wording of this motion. Is there any opposition to that? They're saying no opposition. Well, change the wording of the, the motion to accommodate, just going to use it till passes. It's too small, let's see. Okay, okay. Uh, committee, any other comments or questions? Councilor Race?
Thank you, sir. I know I can't support this. I, um, I really want to wait and see what, um, is going to be presented to us December thirty-first. So I see how about first two hundred and fifty thousand, what effect that can, in my community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Race. Uh, I'll, I'm going to speak to it one more time just quickly. I just, I just want to reiterate that I think it's important that when we have these conversations with citizens about, uh, the upcoming budget and tax rates and, and stuff like that. I think it's important that we've got some ammunition, for lack of a better word, to be able to say, well, part of the increase is because, uh, we're putting the bill for half a million dollars each year and being able to keep the clinic operating in Hinton because they're not able to, uh, because the province isn't providing the funding that I feel that they should be. And I think it's important that we communicate that to the citizens so that they understand that five hundred thousand dollars a year, whether it's split two fifty from revenue, it's either depleting revenues or it's coming out of their pocket through taxation. But I think it's important that they have a very clear understanding that that's going to support what I believe is a provincial responsibility and that they need to understand it and through the budget process, I think is a perfect way to be able to explain to citizens so that they have a clear understanding of how the province downloading responsibility to municipalities is personally affecting them. Thank you. Uh, committee, any other comments, questions? It's, I think, committee then will have a question. The committee seek consensus that the Hilton Healthcare Foundation's funded five hundred thousand dollars. We split the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars funded from the safety reserve. Committee, if you could note now. Councilor Taylor's indicating in favor. And that is defeated five to two with Councilors McGee and Taylor going in favor. Councilor McGee, but it's fair enough.
Thanks, and I appreciate the help, uh, Councilor Ostachik. Uh, Councilor Taylor, I have you in queue next.
Oh, I wanted to, uh, finish off with the Forest Recreation Management Association. I would seek consensus that we ask, um, that we, uh, I don't know what word is, that we give them eighty percent, sixteen thousand dollars for their own.
Uh, did you want to speak to it, Councilor Taylor?
Uh, no, I think that we have a, uh, like I said, a very loose partnership with other projects with Wes Fraser. And, uh, I think that, uh, we want to, uh, keep that positive. Thanks.
Councilor Ostachik, then Councilor Hoss.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I just have a question regarding the situation. Proceedurally, is this motion, is this an okay motion to make procedurally? Because we did, the previous motion was to remove, um, FRMA funding from the civic agencies list. So does this not go contradictory to the motion that was already made?
My apologies, Chair. Uh, that motion was passed, correct?
Mm-hmm.
To remove it?
Mm-hmm.
That I think it is contradictory, that's been.
Uh, I have Councilor Hoss, I'll put myself in queue. Councilor Hoss?
Uh, well, I'd like some clarity on that. So we're removing this, Councilor Taylor? So it's been clear?
Well, I, we're speaking, we're, we're checking that out based on the advice from the CAO. I need a little bit of time to explore this. Did you have a, a question based on, Councilor Taylor currently has, uh, nothing's been ruled on yet. He's made a consensus request on the floor. Councilor Ostachik has asked a question about whether or not that sort of goes against the previous motion, uh, consensus item. The CAO's advice, uh, was essentially, yes, it does. Uh, that, you are next in queue. Do you have anything else on that? Because I need to tease it some a little bit.
Well, no, that was my question because we already had moved to move, remove it. So that was my exact question, Councilor Ostachik had.
So I, as the, as the chair, I have a question for the CAO. Um. So as, as we're in committee of the whole, and this is a consensus, not a motion. Um. That wasn't my understanding. Speaking only for myself, uh, my intent was to support what I expected to be the, the consensus request from Councilor Taylor next. Uh, so I guess I'll, I'll just go back to you to, to see, does that change your position on it at all? Because if not, then I think for myself, I'd like, I'd probably go the way of a motion reconsider. Or have to tease out the procedural wherewithal there because I am very supportive of eighty percent, just not the full twenty thousand.
Yeah, I would. My advice is I do see this as directly contradictory, it's something that, uh, committee has already done. We still do follow the procedural bylaw. Uh, this would be contradictory. I think if we do want to reconsider that decision, as you mentioned, the motion to reconsider might be more.
I guess, uh, one, one more question then procedurally. But a counselor could introduce, uh, an amendment within a regular council meeting to include that sixteen thousand dollars, could they not?
That's correct.
Okay, perfect. Uh, council? Uh, so at this point, uh, based on the advice of the CAO, I will, I will rule it out of order procedurally, but understanding that it's any counselor's right within a regular council meeting to bring that up, uh, as a regular amendment. So. Council, any, uh, the, the floor is open. Councilor Hoss?
Yes, um. I'd like to seek consensus to increase our high school scholarship of a thousand dollars up to Harry Collins High School and Dr. Ardenwood High School, uh, in Fort Valley.
Did you want to speak to that, Councilor Hoss?
I just think this is a very important, uh, part of our responsibility as a town to, um, to appreciate our, our students. And as we heard this evening, um, you know, cost of going up substantially when it comes to education, when it comes to other things around education, even just the, the, the need of equipment to do the education. And I just feel that a thousand dollars, quite frankly, doesn't go very far for our students. Um, and I think, uh, we have looked at this scholarship for quite some time. Um, I've been at the ceremonies where other organizations have given more. Um, I just think it, I feel that to one of our strategic points is to, to, you know, um, encourage our young people to get educated, but also to come back to our community as well and provide that education to our citizens here. So to me, I think we show a good impression. Um, an extra thousand to each school, I think is worth a lot. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. And through the, the chair, the Councilor Hoss, uh, what's your vision for that? Is that to give two more students, uh, a scholarship? Or to double the, the cost of the scholarship? So to give two thousand per student? What's your intention?
That's a great question. My thought was a two thousand per student, just for the amount of costs that they, you know, uh, and the ability there. I, I would say still two scholarships, one each, but two thousand per person. But I leave that up to council. I mean, if we want to do another two students, that's fine with me as well. But my first initial thought was a two thousand dollar scholarship to each student.
Mr. Mayor, does that answer your question?
That does, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I have myself in queue next. Um. I feel odd being the educator at the table and saying whatever I want to say. Um. There was a lot we went through in the budget workshop where I was like, no, we need that from an operating standpoint. Uh, it was actually, was frustrating because I felt like there wasn't a lot, uh, that I could confidently cut from that process and feel like we could still deliver our core services. That's really what I'm looking to do as we go through the budget moving forward. Uh, so in this case, even though it's a small amount, I, I won't be supportive. Uh, and it's certainly not because I think it's valuable. It is valuable. Uh, but we don't have a lot of opportunities to cut things in order to make a difference for our community. Um, thank you. Council? Any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, if we can. We'll just wait for that to populate. There we go. Uh. Council, we'll call the question that committee seek consensus to increase the high school scholarships to Harry Collins High School and Dr. Ardenwood Community Catholic School to four thousand dollars per year. Count, oh, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I can speak to it before we call.
Yeah, please.
Thank you. And I, I just wanted to speak to this briefly. I'm going to vote against this today. Uh, that being said, though, I do think that the idea is a, a good idea. I think it's very valid. And I would be interested in, in over the course of the next year or so, uh, having some discussions about how we could improve our scholarship program, maybe target some of the uh, trades and specialties that we want to bring back into our community. So, uh, in my uh, work with ours, the recruitment and traction committee that we've set up here and going to the ArtPap conferences, it's very clear that there are rural medical programs, there's rural nursing programs, there's rural personal assistant programs coming out. And if we had an opportunity to get some of our high school students some credits into one of these medical programs, get into a rural nursing program, and we can help cover their costs. It's those students that come back to the communities and make a big difference. I'd be really interested in seeing some more targeted scholarship from, from the town. As I think that we could, uh, if we thought this through, meet some of our goals in the long term. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council? Uh, I'll just give everybody one last chance to speak, seeing none. We will call the question that committee seek consensus to increase the high school scholarships to Harry Collins High School and Dr. Ardenwood Community Catholic School to four thousand dollars per year. Council, if you could please vote electronically now. Uh. And that is defeated, uh, with six against and Councilor Hoss in favor. Council, uh, Councilor Ostachik?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, question for administration regarding the West Elephant Trail Society. Um. This administration would have uh, information regarding on how many years the Trail Society has received funding from the town of Hinton, on that extent?
Committee, I believe the first year was twenty twenty-three, it's fifty thousand dollars. Uh, there is fifty thousand dollars allocated for twenty twenty-four, but it was contingent on a specific milestone being met. I have been made aware just today, actually, that that milestone has been met and there will be a formal announcement coming on within the next ten days. Uh, they wanted to do it in conjunction. Uh, they wanted to do it in conjunction with the, uh, the other party that is, um, supporting of that group. And then this would be the third ask of fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Ostachik, thank you. Uh, counsel, uh, the floor is open for, uh, consensus. For questions, of course. Counselor Ostachik?
Yeah. Uh, can, just continue along the same line with the West Delta Trail Society. I, I'd like to get counsel's thoughts and opinions on continuing to invest taxpayer dollars. As indicated, we've been doing it for three years now, to the tune of a hundred thousand dollars so far. And I believe we're the only government partner who's been funding this project at this point. Um, I'm a, I'm a little bit concerned about where the, uh, project is at, at this stage and concerned about some of the the feedback that I've been getting and some of the resistance from, uh, from, uh, parties who may be affected by it. And I just, I'd like to get some thoughts on what committee thinks about continuing to uh, continuing to fund this moving forward.
Thank you, Counselor Ostachik. Uh, Counselor Haas.
Um, yeah, I mean, this is one area, actually, I've gotten quite a few phone calls, quite a few input from both in-town residents and also outside of residents as well, some concerns moving forward and felt that the town investing more money into this at this point may not be the best use of our money. Um, they made some very valid points. Uh, a lot of them around safety is one of them that, uh, have been, been, but I, I'm not going to debate the trail itself. I just, the fact of us funding it at this point, um, it'd be interesting to hear what that announcement potentially would be coming forward, but at this time, um, yeah, I, I'm not sure this is something that I'd like to see other citizens fund uh, before maybe some more work is done and more, you know, partnerships have been established and things like that. So that's where I'm at, I guess. And whatever. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Haas. I have the mayor and then myself.
Thank you. And through the chairman committee, uh, I too don't support funding, uh, this trail through municipal taxation, municipal dollars at, at this stage. I don't think I've seen a plan that that really works for the town of Hinton. And based off of their last presentation, I'm a little bit concerned that the town of Hinton is shaping up to be the prime funder for this project, which I don't think is appropriate for a project that's in the county. And I get regular emails and phone calls from county residents who have concerns about this project. I just can't support municipal taxation with the town of Hinton paying for this at this time. Thank you.
Uh, for myself, I actually, you know, before I go back to my original comments, I'd last, like to ask administration, understanding that even though it's like within probably a day uh, of more public information coming out, uh, would it be possible to move into closed session? So all of council can receive the same information that might potentially impact how they view this particular ask. Um, moving forward, I, I don't think it would be long, but it would protect some of the information that the parties involved might not want to be public at this point.
Yep, certainly.
So I guess I, I don't want to give up the chair, but counsel, Mr. Mayor.
Can I, just for the chair, may I suggest, since there's no consensus on the table here, that if there is information forthcoming, maybe we table this conversation to a later day. I don't want to put administration in an awkward position where they're trying to give us protected information in a closed session that other organizations have.
Counselor Ostachik.
Um, I, I appreciate the mayor's comments. I appreciate the suggestion to go into closed session as well. Um, I think it's important, though, that we start giving some direction on some of these things and, uh, talk about, continuing to talk about them later. So I would like to move into closed session and see what administration is able to, to tell us in, in confidence. So I would move the committee going to closed session.
Thank you very much, Counselor Ostachik. Counsel, uh, there is a consensus request to move into closed session. Any discussion? Seeing none, uh, we'll wait for it to appear on our screens. Counsel, we will call the question that council move in a closed session at five forty-two P M. Uh, if you can vote electronically now, please. Uh, and that is carried seven, uh, pardon me unanimously, uh, counsel. Counsel, would you appreciate a bio break?